Okay, great. Good evening. I'm Marley Snowden, the President of the Bexley Board of Education. In accordance with Ohio Revised Code 121.22 and House Bill 197, I now call the Tuesday, April 7th, 2020 regularly scheduled Board Meeting of the Bexley Board of Education to order. As properly noted to our public, this meeting will be conducted electronically according to House Bill 197. Mr. Smith, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Bardo.
He has to unmute.
Present. Thank you.
Ms. Minio.
Present.
Ms. Mitchell.
Can you unmute, Alicia? You see how to do it? Click in the... There you go.
Present. Sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Powers.
Present.
Ms. Snowden.
Present. Thank you. We normally begin our meetings with a pledge of allegiance, but because we are spread apart and some without a flag present, I thought we would honor our country instead by taking this moment to thank all of our citizens for sacrificing some of our freedoms at the moment for the sake of the common good and the longer term, and especially to thank those who are providing exceptional leadership like Governor DeWine, Dr. Acton, and Mayor Kessler, as well as those healthcare workers and service providers who are on the front lines of this battle against this unprecedented epidemic. I also want to note, this is the first time we're working with this technology for a Board of Education meeting. I appreciate everyone's patience as we go through the evening and note that all members of the governor's team are committed to giving brief but complete and cogent reports so that we can be as streamlined as possible. Our goal is to complete this meeting, giving due consideration to all essential matters and without technical difficulties. So moving right along, can I please have a motion to approve the minutes of our regularly scheduled Board Meeting of March 3rd, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And can I have a motion to approve our agenda? So moved.
A second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That carries. Thank you. All right, moving right along with award recognitions. Dr. Miller.
Thank you very much. I... We had hoped to have our cheerleading, high school cheerleading team in person at a meeting, but since we're not sure when we will have an in-person meeting, we still want to take some time to recognize them for a state championship that they've earned. Let me give you a little background information. This past fall, our cheer coaches, Brooke Wojcik and Lizzie Kaiser, selected 16 cheerleaders from our sideline program to represent Bexley and hopefully qualify for the Ohio Association of Secondary School Administrators State Competition. This year was Bexley's first year completing and qualifying was a goal that the 2020 seniors have been working towards since they were freshmen. The competition cheer squad practiced from November through March 2nd, two to three, or through March, two to three times a week between basketball games, wrestling, meet schoolwork, jobs, and other responsibilities. And the competition cheer squad qualified for states after a strong performance at the Central Regional Event, which was held at Dublin Jerome High School in February. And on March 1st, they competed in the largest division that day against seven other teams from all over the state who qualified. The state competition was held at the Ohio State University at St. John's Arena, and Bexley won the Division III Building Stunting Title by a margin of 23 points in front of an amazing and supportive crowd of students, staff, and community members from Bexley. The team consisted of eight seniors, so very exciting for all of them. And this is directly from the cheerleaders. They would like to thank Coach Paget for training them, the Board of Education that listened and believed in them three years ago, the Bexley Boosters, the Athletic Department, and every single person who attended to cheer them on. So congratulations once again to our high school cheerleading squad for being state champs. And we do hope to have them in person at a meeting before our seniors leave for what their next journey will bring them.
Fantastic. Thank you. My congratulations to that group as well. It's very exciting. And then you have one more recognition, Dr. Miller? Our Montrose Cafeteria staff, sorry?
Yes, we wanted to recognize our Montrose Cafeteria staff. I'm going to tell you, I feel like I'm blanking if this was the end of February or if it was the beginning of March. Time seems to have changed in the last few weeks. But we had a day where we had to have our students eat lunch in an impromptu way outside due to a gas leak or the concern of one that we had at the school. Luckily, that all worked out and was fine. But our cafeteria staff there, Jessica Shipe, Soledad Bowling, and Kelly McCabe, in just an instant's notice, were able to make sure that our students were fed while they were, while Ms. Klosterman-Lando made sure they were safe outside. And so this was just an example of people being innovative and changing on a dime. And in the last few weeks, we've watched lots of people do that. So that's just part of who we are in Bexley and want to thank them for their dedication to our students.
Great. Thank you. All right, so that brings us to our board reports. So I want to start by saying on behalf of the whole board, a thank you to all of our employees for the determination and grit they have displayed in light of this threat. Beginning in the first days of this crisis, when I met for eight and a half straight hours with the executive leadership team through to today, we as a board have been awed by our staff and administration's laser focus to keep our students first. The task is Herculean, but they remain creative, flexible, and resolute. We are deeply impressed and truly grateful. As for my board reports, the Policy Committee did not meet, but you will see two related policies on for our first reading tonight. These have to do with state law around graduation requirements. That law codifies requirements that we already had in practice. So this language is simply to put into policy what we're already doing. We also are set to review the change, we were also going to change, review the change in our policy regarding the pay-to-participate fees that we started this time last year, but decided in light of the current school closing, the conversation would be better suited when we have our extracurricular programs up and running. So we put a reminder on our calendars to revisit that at that time. I had my quarterly update meeting with our Director of Operations, Dr. Williams, yesterday. He reported that the silver lining of our schools being shut down is that we need, that needed maintenance can be done with safety procedures in place, of course. So among other things, the gym floor refinishing is complete. The new transformer at Montrose is replaced or put in, and the work and work is continuing with our new phone and radio systems. Additionally, the Athletic Department is using this time for cataloging and updating systems and procedures and working on professional development. So he explained the detailed work that they have done to ensure that the teachers have some access to their classrooms during this time while still maintaining required social distancing and rigorous cleaning protocols. Finally, we discussed our cafeteria staff and how they've prepared and delivered meals to over 140 students in their homes. You all may recall that we had originally set five places for pickup around the community, but found that only a fraction of the people who signed up actually came to pick up. So now the staff is using five of our vans to deliver the meals, and Dr. Williams even takes a shift himself in the afternoons. We will continue to expand our numbers for that if needed though. So if anyone is in need, please check the Food Services section on our website, and it directs you to how to sign up. So those are my reports for the evening. Ms. Minio.
Thank you, Ms. Snowden. I really have nothing to report. You kind of covered our policy. You kind of covered our policy. My last meeting with Ms. Abraham on student, student learning was in December, so that probably will have an update coming in May. And of course, we're meeting the OSBA. The only thing I really have to say is, of course, we're meeting today in a different format because of change, change in law. So that's all I have to say.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Barno.
I have no new reports since the, the March meeting, but just since I'm in the Athletic Board, just a quick update, I know with Governor DeWine's announcement, the no-contact period is going through May 1st. I know the OHSAA is looking at possible abbreviated spring schedules. I think being optimistic that there might be some salvage season, but who knows? They're also starting to look at fall sports as well to determine if this goes further, how that is going to be affected. And of course, there are other issues with eligibility and other things that might go along with that, but there's been no firm announcement yet. That's kind of more of a generic report in relation to athletics, but in relation to anything specific with the Athletic Board or any of the other committees that I might have, nothing further to report.
Thank you. Mr. Barno, I was curious, has the Franklin County School Board Alliance been at all active in this period?
Not at, not at all. We haven't, there's been no contact. I've reached out to a few of the more active members that were, that were kind of driving the train, so to speak. And what, and the chairperson of that was a former board member from Columbus Public Schools, and he's no longer there. So, and I think the guy from Reynoldsburg, Joe, I can't remember his last name off the top of my head. He was also very active. I think he was the Vice President of that committee. And he is now, I believe, he, I believe he's, he holds a position with the city, an elected position, but I'm not sure. But answer, answer your question, no. No, no contact, no anything. It's kind of fallen off the face of the earth, actually.
Yeah, interesting. Okay, thank you. Ms. Mitchell.
I just have a brief update on Bravo for the Bexley Education Foundation. Of course, last-minute change with everything going on. And they were able to establish a virtual Bravo event. They had close to 500 electronic bidders and gift, gift card grabbers during the event. And there were a lot fewer items than years past that didn't get a bid, so that was really good. And they raised just over $47,000 at the time that I received that report. So I'm sure we'll get more updates soon. And that's all I have. We haven't met with the Facility Advisory Council since our January meeting.
Great. Thank you. Dr. Miller, I know you had contact with Ms. Howes. Oh, sorry, I skipped over Ms. Powers. Sorry. Ms. Powers.
Thank you, Ms. Snowden. Just a brief report from the Bexley Recreation Department. Director Price has been doing a great job of keeping us up to date. We did not have our most recent meeting. We do plan to meet in May.
The Bexley Rec activities were canceled through April 6th and then again through April 30th. They are working to give refunds and credits as appropriate. They're keeping staff working at home, but their maintenance staff is working online. I think most pertinent for school-related issues is that the preschool teachers have developed online content that launched last week for preschool students, and they will continue to provide content for the remainder of the school year. There is a Facebook group, Bexley Recreation at Home, that has content going up. So if you want to look at that, that's a place to get information, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Sorry, so now, Dr. Miller, I believe you had the opportunity to speak with Ms. Howes, and did she have any?
I didn't, I did not have the opportunity to do that, so hopefully we'll have something next month.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so moving along, that brings us to public comment. We have posted next to our notification of the Board Meeting on our website, the link for public comment, which was an email link so that people, we could still hear people's concerns even in a more secure live environment like this. So Mr. Trill was going to read those if there were any. Mr. Trill, are there any that are available or that have come in as of now?
I have not received any, no.
Okay, then we will pass on public participation for tonight. Should we need to meet in a similar fashion next month, we will employ the same means, so people can feel free to, to use that as they would like. So that takes us to the Superintendent's Office. Not that she's been at all busy those last months. We're looking forward to hearing how, how things are going. So, Dr. Miller.
So before I get into the items on the agenda, I will give an update for the Board on just some of the things that we're discussing. This is certainly not a comprehensive list that would take quite some time, but a few of the high-level items. One question that's come up around athletics is pay-to-participate for spring sports. Mr. Barno mentioned where the Ohio High School Athletic Association is. If the spring season should be canceled, we will refund all of those. I believe, Mr. Smith, we talked about if any parents wanted to apply those toward fall sports, that we would, we would figure that out, but we are holding until, until we get word. And many items fall into that category of, until we have definite direction, we are in somewhat of a holding pattern, but we have been thinking about it and we would plan to refund those. Grading, that's a question specifically at the secondary and even the high school level where grade point averages are being developed. We, when I say we, I mean Chief Academic Officer Jill Abraham and I met with Ms. Robbins and Mr. McMillan and talked last week about various ways that we might approach grading, with the primary concerns being that this distance learning environment should not negatively impact a student's grade anyway. At the same time, some, some groups are talking about pass/fail. If we went pass/fail, that could potentially eliminate a semester that a student would use toward their grade, and some of our students would like to be able to receive a grade for second semester and count that towards the grade point average. So we discussed and processed three different options that would not harm students but would allow them to continue to earn a grade. And so those three options will be shared with our high school staff and the leadership team at the high school, the instructional chairs, and they'll come back with a recommendation for us. But I, I'm happy to report that the most common concern was that we do not in any way negatively impact students. They didn't ask for this or plan for this, so we will not do anything that would hurt children in any way. Another question that comes up, obviously, again, is graduation. What will we do if we can't gather? Tomorrow morning, Ms. Robbins and I have a meeting to talk about seniors in general and to talk about how we could, how we can provide a meaningful end of their senior year amidst the, the guidance and the need to make decisions that keep people safe, that keep people healthy, knowing that it's not just about those of us who gather, but then who are the other people in our lives that we impact? And we know we need to really be thoughtful about that. And so we are talking about and do. We will likely, not likely, we'll definitely be seeking some input from students as well. So we know this is not the way they wanted the end of their senior year to go, and it's not the way that we wanted it to go. So we are going to work diligently to make sure that they have a very positive end to their senior year. Prom is another one of those big events at the secondary level. We have canceled the venue. Again, we're talking about what else we might be able to do, what might we be able to do in the future. We all are having conversations with our colleagues in other districts about ideas and possibilities. I think the biggest concern is so much is an unknown about the future. When will we be able to gather? When will be able to get together? We just don't know those things. But I just want the Board to know and any public who might listen to this or is listening to know that these are things that are on our mind and we're talking about what to do. But we are also reluctant to make decisions when we really don't know much more than in the next few weeks right now. So we're being thoughtful, we're being patient, but, but we are considering what we might be able to do. So I also wanted to provide a brief technology update. As of last week, and we had distributed, and I'm going to get this number over, over 90 devices, I believe, have been distributed to students. We have prioritized households where there is no access to a computer device. We have very limited devices to be able to loan to students. And so we are prioritizing, there are, we have households with no device whatsoever. And so that's where the priority was. We did put out a survey to allow people to let us know if they needed the devices. I want to give a shout out to Director of Technology Brad Pettit, his team, and other folks who have helped out to, to make the distribution appropriate with our social distancing guidelines, as well as making sure that the devices we're loaning out have the proper filters. So again, we protect students. That's always our primary concern. So, so those are going out. We'll continue to work with families as needed. But I, I want to stress that we have very limited devices. I want to thank you for your approval of the use of permanent improvement funds last year. We, because of that, were able to provide each of our teachers with a laptop and to invest in additional laptop carts that that's what we're using to loan to students. Had we not done that, we would be in a much different place. We are certainly not where we would like to be with technology. I was aware, and for those of you who are on the Board, when I was hired, began talking to you early on about technology and needs that we have in technology. As part of our strategic plan, we indicated that we needed to develop a technology plan during last school year. Mr. Pettit convened a team of people, including community members, parents, staff, and some former students. They developed that technology plan, and that plan does have provisions for moving to a one-to-one environment where we provide a device to every single student. And we need to now turn to that plan with a sense of urgency, more urgency than we thought we needed to. We thought we could maybe work on this a little more slowly. This was a change for in our community, not all community members. All parents wanted us to consider one-to-one, but I think our current environment has shown that we need to turn to that plan, as I said, with a sense of urgency. We've made some upgrades, but we still have a distance to go in order to be better, better suited to this type of environment. And as we listen to where we might be in the future, we may have school closures again, and we want to be better equipped to, to meet the needs of our students. And, and saying that, that's, that's why this has been a Herculean effort for teachers across our country. But I want to say for, for those of us in districts without one-to-one environments, it's even been greater. And our teachers have still done a phenomenal job, as well as our principals and our administrators. So echoing what's already been said, it's, it's been a, a big climb, and people have done a great job. I also, just on technology, it is going to cost money. We're, we're going to need to expend financial resources in order to do what we need to do. And we, we needed to do this before, but it's even more urgent now. So we'll be talking more about that, of course, in the future. But again, a great shout out to our Director Brad and, and his team. Distance learning is up and running, and I want to here, make sure that I recognize, there are so many people, but our Chief Academic Officer Jill Abraham is really leading the development of this really very closely in conjunction with, with Mr. Pettit. I don't know that people can fully understand the scope of work that it takes to go from face-to-face instruction to distance learning. And while many of us are now working from home, which is not our typical work environment, working adult-to-adult is difficult when you don't normally do it, but it's adults. We are asking teachers to provide instruction to five-year-olds and 13-year-olds. It's a, it's a very, very significant change, and our staff is doing a great job with it. Are we perfect? Certainly not, but I don't know that anyone knows what perfect looks like in this environment. But what I can tell you is that everybody is working to make this as meaningful as possible for students. Also, in terms of some of the specific areas of instruction around special education or whatnot, we're doing the best we can. Guidance from both state and federal levels changes regularly. At one point last week or two, it may have been two weeks ago, again, I apologize, time has sort of, there's a continuum I feel that we're in right now. But at one point, we had three different, or different conflicting guidance from differing agencies, and that makes this work even more difficult, because everyone, and I'm not criticizing those agencies, everyone is trying to figure out what this means. And so we continue to do that as well, and again, appreciate everyone's work. I talked about the technology challenges that we have. I also want to thank our students. Our students have just been phenomenal. Our parents are, are working hard and recognizing that parents are working from home, trying to manage their own children. But remember that our teachers are also trying to teach other children while also trying to teach their own children. So there's a, we, we, everyone's dealing with the same, the same complex dynamic right now. We've looked at this, this time too in phases. So the first phase, we knew we would be out of school through April 3rd. And so when we learned that we would be out through the, the, the 1st of May, Jill's guidance was around, okay, so if, from March to April 9th through this Thursday, we don't have school Friday due to Good Friday, that's sort of Phase 1. And so some goals were set around what we want to accomplish in Phase 1. Now they're looking at the April 13th through May 1st as Phase 2. So should the goals change? Should some of the things that we've put into place when we thought this was going to take place over a week now have to change? So for instance, we've talked about teachers being online and available to students from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. Well, maybe it would make sense that those are staggered throughout the day so that a parent who has children in multiple levels, that would work better. So now that we know we're going to be out longer, we will, we'll revisit those. If we are closed for the remainder of the year, then we will enter into Phase 3, and we will revisit again. And again, this is a place where I ask for patience, because what seems the right answer one day can be a different answer the next day. And I think we're all experiencing that right now, and it's no different for us. As I've been saying, there are no answers. We're not holding them back. We're developing the answers. And so I, again, want to appreciate those people who are, who are working diligently. In terms of staying informed, I'm participating in two superintendent calls weekly. One is the Central Ohio Superintendent's Association. We are meeting weekly, virtually, sharing what we're doing, sharing what we're figuring out, sharing how school board meetings are being done, how public comment is being done. Lots of sharing of information. And then I'm in a larger group called, Bexley is a part of a group called the Alliance for High Quality Education, and that's superintendents from across the state, and we are meeting weekly as well. Oftentimes, there are legal teams that are joining us from various law firms. Our own firm, Scotts Griffin, have been part of some of those calls as well. So just providing guidance, providing interpretation and that sort of thing, that, that's being very helpful as well. All of our administrators are connecting with various groups, their own professional groups as well. So we really are being very collaborative, and I appreciate all of my colleagues across the state. And today I was on, actually on a call with superintendents from across the country and was in a small chat room with somebody from Seattle, Washington, North Dakota, Pennsylvania, Nebraska. We almost hit sea to shining sea in that call. So just lots of good sharing and collaborating that's going on, and so I want you to be aware of that. The, so if there are no questions about just some of those topics, I will go on to highlight a few of the important items on the agenda that are in my recommendations.
Great.
You will see, I'm very pleased to recommend Ms. Raquel Armstrong as the next, as the, actually the first, or no, not first, but the next Assistant Principal at the, at Bexley Middle School. Ms. Armstrong is coming to us recently. She's a doctoral student at Ohio State and doing an interim principalship in Columbus Public Schools, but she previously was a principal of two middle schools in Cleveland Heights, University Heights. And she impressed both the committees and Mr. Cottle, and then Mr. Cottle and Mrs. Abraham. And I did a final interview with her. We had two outstanding finalists, two outstanding finalists. And Mr. Cottle said that even the, the candidates that he interviewed across the board were extremely strong. But at the end, we felt that Ms. Armstrong was going to be a great fit for us. She brings some diversity to our team and in, in both her, her teaching background and having been in another city. So we're really excited about having her come on board. I'm very much looking forward to getting to know her better and, and have her be part of our team. We also, also on the agenda, you see some job descriptions. One is for the Special Education Aides. This is not a new job description, but we would like to update this job description. I've talked to you in, recently about wanting to build our capacity. We have a part of our strategic plan around being high performing. And so we are adding some additional qualifications for our Special Education Aides. So we now are going to require that they pass the para-pro qualif- the para-pro test. And we are providing support for our current aides to do just that. Also, they are going to need to take and maintain their crisis prevention intervention training. We provide that training. We will continue to provide them that training, but that will be a requirement as well. And so it's an updated job description that will build the capacity of our team. There's also a job description for a tech integration coach. We have talked about this position as well in the past. This was one that I didn't bring with the others. Again, the, the events of the last month have shown us that a tech integration coach would be extremely helpful right now. And so while I'm bringing the job description, I would fully intend, or I fully would, would like to ask that you support the hiring of this coach, just as we need to. Upgrades in technology is not just devices. We also need to support our teachers. And so having a coach who can do that would be most advantageous for both our teachers and our students. And I, I believe it's a need that, that we have. We've believed that all along. But again, as I talked about turning to our, our tech integration plan with urgency, the existence of coaches is a part of that tech integration plan. I believe the plan actually called for two. I'm asking that we hire one at this time. You'll see a job description for a, a logistics coordinator. This role would replace our receiving and distribution clerk. Art Banks currently holds that position, and his position includes some supervisory duties with transportation. The logistics coordinator would have a similar role, but without the supervision of transportation, which will go to Mr. John Eichenberry. There is a financial savings as well to this. It could save anywhere from, I would say fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, depending on where the position or where the, the experience level of the person taking the position. So again, we are shifting the supervisory role to Mr. Eichenberry and, and making that, we would like to make that change. You will see that this would non-renew Mr. Banks. I want to stress, there are no performance concerns with Mr. Banks. There are no, any reason that we would non-renew him, other than we feel that we need to make this change in the, the role to better match what we need right now in the district. In fact, if Mr. Banks wanted to apply for the, the new position, he would certainly be welcome to do that, and we would appreciate that. You'll also see, already mentioned, those, those graduation policies. IKFC is regarding students who are at risk of graduating. That is a, again, as Ms. Snowden said, a new policy required by O R C. We already have the practices in place. We put these plans in writing it to the parents. It includes what the, what the pathway would be for students. And so we are really already meeting the requirements of this policy because we've just felt that that was the right thing to do in the past. And then you'll see policy IKF, which is graduation requirements, and the only changes are the references to the new policy and the Ohio Revised Code, which makes that policy necessary. That's quite a bit. Does anyone have questions for me?
Um, I did have a couple of questions. Will the students be included in that discussion around how you're going to handle grades? Or will that all be handled through administration and then just rolled out to the students?
I, you, I lost your sound on the first part of your question. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me okay now?
Yes, I'm good now.
Okay. In regards to the grading, will, will our students, particularly like seniors, have a chance to weigh in on the grading system, or will that all be handled with administration and then rolled out to them?
It's actually going to, the, the three options that we discussed there, Ms. Robbins will talk with the instructional chairs about that. I don't know that we were going to ask students' opinions about what they would like to see. I think the primary thing is that whatever we do is, it's a, it's a no harm to students. The plan, all the options allow students to either maintain where they are or to improve.
Well, the reason I ask is just because you, you mentioned that some students might, you were taking into consideration their opinions in the first place. So, you know, some students may want to continue on. They may want to do the pass fail. And that just sounds like you're, you're taking their opinions, but now you're saying maybe you won't engage them? I'm just curious as to what, if the process is not going to include them. I just want to be clear.
I don't, I have not, Ms. Robbins, if she's planning to engage students in the discussion, we asked her to, to engage the staff with the discussion. In terms of, we didn't ask their opinions about not having, what we know is if we eliminate an entire semester, that would harm some students. If there's a whole loss of a semester grading, that could hurt some students.
Okay.
And so that's just a mathematical consideration that we've brought in.
Sure.
In terms of, what we want to do is gives, as always, students every opportunity, but we also want students to be engaged throughout the year and not to. This, this is the time of year where sometimes it's hard for seniors to stay super engaged in their learning anyway. And we, we want our kids to stay engaged. We think it's important that we continue to provide education. And I know we all do. So I don't know that she's going to specifically talk to students. She may. That was not part of our direction, but it was to definitely get input from our, our teachers. Okay?
The other questions, does anybody else have any questions on that?
No, you can go ahead. Thanks, Alicia.
Okay. You have mentioned the, with the technology going one-to-one. I just want to confirm, our plan is to, if we're going to go one-to-one in our district, we're going to continue the use of that in the curriculum beyond just a pandemic response? Or are we only going to deploy it in the event of emergencies?
Our technology plan included a process for, for moving to a one-to-one environment before this ever happened.
Right.
And so this is not, no, we, we are not looking at a move to one-to-one probably because this has happened, but the sense of urgency in moving it along faster has certainly been made clear. Does, does, I can talk with you more about it. Does that answer your question?
I just, I wanted to just confirm that based on what you said to this evening, and I just, if I was hearing you wrong, I just wanted to clarify. With the special education job description changes to the aides, I'm assuming we are, but I wanted to double check. Are we covering the costs for the aides to obtain this additional pro certifications?
Yes, we've provided access. And in fact, one of the things we've asked of our aides who are with us right now during this closure is to work on what we call the OCALI modules that will help them to prepare for the test. And we are going to pay for the test for any of our current aides.
And then.
We will utilize.
Go ahead.
I'm just saying, we will utilize, we have some grant funds that we can utilize to pay for this, those exams for the, for our current aides.
Okay. Then with the tech coach, you, you had mentioned you're, you're looking to potentially hire this one at this time. So is there thought that you want to expand that beyond just one tech coach?
As I indicated, I believe in the tech plan, it calls for two. And so the technology plan that was presented for two, and I, when I am on mute, I can pull that up, but I'm at this.
That's okay.
I'm asking for, for us to move forward with one.
Okay. Now, is, with the logistics position that you're eliminating, is that currently a supervisory role and Mr. Banks is being asked to reapply for the same, the job that's now being changed? Or is it not a supervisory role?
It's not a supervisory role. It will go from a, an exempt position, which is, that includes some supervisory role to an hourly position with no supervisory role.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for Dr. Miller?
It's Victoria. I just have two quick things.
Yes.
Thank you. On, I'm, I'm excited to hear the report on the new middle school assistant principal. I just want to be, get the clarification that the extended days in the period between April 8th and July 31, there's a per diem for that. I understand that. It's five extended days, up to five extended days. So that means that, that this new middle school principal could have up to five days during that period that we would pay that per diem. Is that correct?
Yes, and that's, that is standard that when we bring on a new administrator, because administrative contracts don't begin until August 1st. We often need them prior to August 1st. So that's consistent when Mr. McMillan came on as the high school assistant principal. We had five extended days. For a principal, we've done a few more. So, so that's, that's fairly standard.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
And then regarding the technology integration coach, I understand the, the new environment that we're in and the urgency that you're expressing with respect to moving forward with the technology plan. I had hoped, and we had previously discussed in earlier board meetings, that we could wait to confirm that we did not need to hire additional teachers as we got our information about the school year. And now that Governor Dewine has been unable to confirm that there won't be an impact on school budgets, I, I continue to have a concern about budgeting issues. I'm just urging us to be as cautious as we can be about new expenditures. I know we are being as cautious as we can be about new expenditures. And I do understand that this new environment that we're in requires us to pay a different and more urgent attention to technology issues. But I do continue to be very concerned about where our money is going to be in the fall, given all the expenses that are being loaded onto the state and the budgetary concerns. So I just wanted to raise that as a a statement about understanding that things have changed, but that I hope that in all the arenas that we have an opportunity to be cautious. We can be as cautious as possible about spending. And that's all I have.
Are there any other board members that would have questions for Dr. Miller? Okay, thank you. Then I would like a motion, please, to approve 5A through, sorry, I'm not going to move down on here, 58 through I, please.
Don't move.
Don't move.
I think that'll be Ms. Minio as a second.
Oh, I'm a second. Alicia is a second. Sorry.
So that's Ms. Minio is the first and, and Ms. Mitchell is the second. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Smith, I believe this requires a roll call.
Ms. Minio?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Barno?
Yes.
Ms. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Snowden?
Yes. Thank you. So that takes us on to the treasurer's report, please. So, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Snowden. I only have one item on the agenda for any treasurer-related items of, or of significance. Pulling up the March meeting, going to try to zoom in here. Hopefully that, can you view that or see that okay?
Yeah.
Like I had said in the March meeting, I, I had expected, and it looked like the property taxes were a little bit lower than forecasted. In looking into the detail of that, that is primarily due to, I guess, the forecasting tool that I have. And it took into account delinquencies on the levy that we had just passed. Well, there's no delinquency on those levies because they weren't, they're not due till now. So that was part of the, the adjustment or, or the difference, about half of that 200,000. The other half is, is just due to timing. Individuals can be, can be delinquent. But that's relatively small. It's less than 1% difference or variance. I believe the, the story right now, again, let me say that really, we did not see any impact on revenue or expenditures in the month of March significantly. You, we do see a little bit in the expenditures just because of staffing, my, my staff not being in the building like we normally would, paying, paying bills every week. We pretty much paid the most essential bills the last week of March. So there are some, a little bit of delay in expenditures, primarily in the purchase services, supplies. These three areas are a little bit lower. They were trending low anyway throughout the whole year. But again, it's not a bad thing to be under forecast on expenditures. I'll, I'll address the current situation that we're dealing with now. But before I move on to that, are there any questions on the monthly financials?
Mr. Smith, I was just looking at the the monthly budget review. We're just a little down on property taxes, but up on income taxes. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And maybe you're going to address the current situation. I was curious about the income tax with the delay being.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll just jump in to.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to, to.
You're muted, Mr. Barno.
Sorry. I'll let you go ahead and address that. I was just curious. I was going to ask you a question about that, but I'll let you go ahead. And then if I have more questions, I'll ask you.
Sure. So I will address, I'll address the income tax right now. We have another payment, one more payment for this fiscal year, which happens in April, or this, this month, at the end of this month. I don't expect that to see a, a dip or a loss from our projections. I actually expect us, by the time we get the, the revenue, to be over our projections. The reason for that is the state of Ohio sends us the money that they've collected up to the end of February. We did not really start seeing a, as a state, job losses until about March. So I don't think we're going to see an impact this fiscal year on the income tax. I do believe we will be seeing a drop in revenue in this line next year at least, and probably the next, the, the next one after that fiscal years 21 and 22. One thing that's probably going to be a challenge for us is, well, not necessarily a challenge, but is, is going to be different financially is the months of July, August, and probably September and October, probably for a while. So two things are happening. The, the federal government and the state delayed the filing deadline for taxes. That will delay most likely our July collection. We get a, our payment, we get a payment in July 31st. So the deadline being pushed back will push back filers in all areas, except for maybe the payroll tax. But we're not sure how payroll be, will be impacted in Bexley specifically. But that payroll tax will be March, April, and May, paid in July. But a big, July is our biggest collection of the four on the income tax. So, and again, this is based on, primarily based on the tax year 2019. The July payment will have a little bit of quarterly filings for those individuals who file quarterly on their own, without filing individually or through payroll. We do see that in July. So in other words, that largest payment in July, most likely will, will see a deferment of those revenues into October. The other area of, I would say, revenue deferment in the short term is in the property tax. The Franklin County Auditor and the Franklin County Treasurer has appealed to the tax, tax commissioner to delay the deadline for property taxes, which is in June. They've requested to delay that in August. So we start collecting property taxes the first week of July. And, and we collect, or we, we get payments from the county through about the first or second week of August. We kind of use that to fulfill our coffers. Like we've talked about during the levy campaign, we, we don't get all of our revenue spread out evenly. It comes in chunks, just like the income tax, property tax comes in chunks. So we're fortunate that we've, we have a cash balance to meet payroll for months of July and August because of these deferred payments. We, if we did not have a strong financial footing or cash balance, we could be in some tight waters or a, a tight situation. I mean, I, I will say it's going to be a little bit different because we've laddered our investments, thinking that we're going to get these normal or expected cash payments in July. So there may be a circumstance where I have to sell some securities because we may not be getting $7 million of revenue in July. We may be getting three. But our investments are, if you look, they're, the interest rates on our investments are pretty strong. So I don't feel too worried about selling securities. You can see earnings rates of 1.9 or 2, which you are not seeing right now in the market. So that's, I think that's more logistics or operations in the short term of bringing in some investments to meet payroll. But the long-term concern, I think, is, is where our income tax is going to start rolling in, in October, in January, to see how that's impacted Bexley specifically. As you know, Bexley's a little bit different when it comes to the income tax compared to the rest of the state. We have, we have just different demographics. So it's hard to know if our residents are still employed. We do have residents that have variable income, just by the nature of their, their jobs and their businesses. So I fully expect us to see a dip in this, but it will be delayed because of the way the payments fall. I'm just going to check my notes to make sure I'm covering everything. Interest rates are dropping, so that, that's, that's a little bit of a, we'll see a decrease in our revenue for next year. So for every 1% of decrease in interest rates, that accounts for about $200,000 of revenue. So on a $20 million investment portfolio, 1% is about $200,000. That's, that's significant. That'll impact the forecast. And obviously, this is forecasting time. So we'll have a, a, a very different-looking five-year forecast than what we saw in November. On the expenditure side, we do see some fewer expenditures. Obviously, substitute teachers are not being employed during this time. This tends to be a more, a higher usage for substitutes. So we're not spending money on, on substitutes. Utilities are reduced. But again, I would stress that our main expenditure, our 80%, is our staff, staffing and benefits of our staffing. So while we are seeing some savings, we're not seeing a, a ton during this downtime of us not physically being in the buildings. So I, I guess in summary, it's, it's great that we have a, a strong cash balance. It's great that we had a levy in November of 19. If we would be looking at a levy this year, we'd be, I'd be really nervous. I mean, I'm still really nervous about, about our revenues. Oh, the other thing, Ms. Powers kind of alluded to it. The state of Ohio funds us at about 20%. The, the governors left that kind of on the table, I believe, for cuts, not only in state agencies, but in the state foundation program. So history has, if it's any indication of how the state may operate in the future, they've kind of left education at the, at the end of, of cuts, but they, they're not immune to them. In 2008 and 2009, there was federal stimulus that the state used to help prop up funding in K-12 education. So I know that there is funding in the stimulus bill from the federal government to the state's earmarked for education. So we'll see, see how that plays into not only next year's budget, but maybe the next two years after next year. So we're in a biennium, we're, we're in the first year of the biennium. We've got one more year next school year, the second year. But the state has the authority to, to revise the budget if, if revenues should fall very short.
Hey Kyle?
Yes.
Would a state throw that, throw like a district like ours back into that like formula for funding again? And it all depends on, you know, if we, if we, you know, hit that whatever, you know, number or formula that they decide is how they're going to determine whether districts get funded?
It's, it's hard to say what the state would do. I would hope it would just be a, just a percentage cut. We're really, it's hard to say that we're on a formula-based funding system now because they pretty much just said, you're getting what you got last year, with the exception of an enrollment bump in funding, which we did get. So it, it's going to be hard to say how, how the state may roll out funding in this, this environment.
To sort of piggyback a little bit of what Victoria said, I don't know that we can't, or that we should not be thinking about what operational costs, whatever those are, where we might need to make some additional savings. I, I mean, I'm doing it right now, running buildings lean and mean, if you will, because there's not, there aren't bodies in the building, so they're not consuming supplies, which, you know, obviously you, you indicated some, some decreases in those line items. But if there are other areas where we're not running as efficiently, and I think to both yours and Kim's credit, you, you often look at that when you're looking at job positions and reworking those and repurposing those, if you will. I, I think we have to take a, a, a hard look at whether or not we are operating as efficiently as we can in every bucket. Like there shouldn't be a bucket that we shouldn't be looking at. And I get it that there's 80% of our costs are people, but, I mean, if we're losing money, we're delayed or it's deferred, our costs and expenses aren't necessarily going down. In fact, well, we could control them. Hopefully, we would be able to control them a little bit and reduce the expenses. So we should, we should see a correlation between a reduction in expenses. So we have, we have to take a hard look at that.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Smith?
Yeah. My question I was going to ask earlier, you, you mostly answered it, Mr. Smith. The, the income tax being pushed back to July 15th, it's not, it, it doesn't sound like it's going to reduce, at least for fiscal year 20, it's just going to be delayed somewhat. And the real estate property taxes as well. Is there? So we normally would get income tax with the regular schedule. We would normally get income tax payments from April 15th deadline in July. Is that, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
So, so a three-month delay. So we're looking at it in October. But generally, don't we get another income tax payment in October under the regular guidelines? Are we looking like a, a really large income tax payment in October?
October's relatively small. July's.
Okay.
Because of the April 15th deadline. October and January have, those are primarily made up of payroll taxes, which happen every month and are remitted every month to the state. So we'll probably see a, a decrease in that now. It, it just really depends on how long this lasts and how our community's impacted.
Right.
So there'll, there'll be, there'll be a reduction, and there'll be a delay both in July.
Okay. And, and property taxes, that's mostly just going to be a delay as opposed, I mean, I, I, I'm not a financial expert, obviously.
Yeah. Who knows what the state would say in any kind of relief with property taxes? I, I don't want to, to guess.
Yeah.
But there, there's, I don't know that there's any appetite for a, an across-the-board reduction of property taxes. They've just delayed it. So a, a two-month delay will impact us. But I think it goes back to our belief as a school district to have a cash balance on hand. And I, I said it during, during the levy many times, you, you don't know what can happen in July. And I, I wish I was just saying that and not actually telling you six months later, look, it's happened. But it's, we're, we're fortunate that we have the cash on hand to weather this short-term delay in, in cash. The, the long-term question is, which we won't know really, probably for another year on the income tax, to have a good feeling of where we are. But we've, we've been good stewards of our money. We've been fiscally conservative over the years, generally, that we can, we can shift some of our investments to current operating expenditures to weather that delay in revenue.
And then one just quick follow-up question, just on expenditures. I, I was thinking about this today. What you said with substitute teachers, utilities, like food services. I know that we're still, we're providing food services to free and reduced lunch and, and others. But those expenditures as well. I guess what I'm, I, what I was curious about is, aside from the two that you mentioned, are there like purchase services or any other types of services that we are not utilizing, that we are not obligated to pay? Not that I want people to lose their jobs or anything else like that. I understand the contractual obligations to, not only for our teachers, but our service personnel. But are there other services or other things that, that we aren't using that, that, again, just off the top of your head, it's, I'm not holding your feet to the fire or anything, just curious if there was other expenditures like in food services or other things that we might not be having the purchases that we needed to do to maybe offset some of the, the lower income?
Yeah, the, the big, the, the big ones are the, I would say, employment of individuals on an ad, as-needed basis, like substitutes. That's, that's probably going to be fairly, well, I mean, it, it'll be okay. We may spend $40,000 to $60,000 on, on a month for subs. That does kind of sound a lot, but. So we'll save, have some savings there. But I, you did mention food service, which any, like any fund in a school district, it cannot operate in the red or zero, or can't have a negative cash balance. So while we rely on revenues for cafeteria or food service expenditures to support not only the food, but the employees of that, that'll, this will negatively infect the food service fund. So we, we may need to increase our transfer next year. I think they've got enough cash on hand to, to operate the rest of this fiscal year, but we may need to increase their transfer a, a little bit next year to kind of make up their loss of revenue as well.
Okay.
But as far as other areas that we're not spending on, utilities are decreased, classroom supplies are, are decreased. But we've also had to increase expenditures on technology offerings. But I, I will say we're, we're tracking everything that is related to this pandemic on an expenditure side, should we be able to ask for reimbursement? So not only in overtime, but like technology offerings or, or things we've needed to, to be able to transition to distance learning.
Right. Well, I appreciate that. And I know that both you and Dr. Miller, I mean, even before all of this, that you're always looking at that stuff. I was just, it's more of a, a curiosity as to how, you know, understand the revenue, but I also understand there might be other expenditures that, you know, obviously, we're not using certain services that, that we need to expend money on, but.
I mean, the, the other thing that came to mind is overtime, extra trips and field trips. I, I guess the, the hours for the, or the wages that we would pay outside of someone's regular contract, we'd be saving on as well.
Yeah. And bus drivers are, for instance, for an example, bus drivers are under the, under contracts. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so they're.
Kyle, oh, sorry. Go ahead, John.
They're getting their regular pay, but for instance, like going to sporting events and stuff like that, they're.
Field trips, athletic events, which the general fund does pay for. We, we would not be seeing that expense.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, so those expenses won't hit our, our account then because we're not using them?
Correct.
For like, okay. What about like, you know, like we didn't have a spring play in that supplemental, for example, just using that as an example, for, you know, someone or a concert, the, a company, a companyist that comes to the concert, are we obligated to still pay that person if we don't have the band concert for the end of the year?
It depends because, for example, like the, the band or supplementals that last a year long, there, there's, there's been multiple concerts beforehand. Things that we, we probably still would pay at, at full pay. Things that are maybe not happened yet. I think an elementary theater play has not happened, so those would not be paid. We've, we've indicated that should athletics not happen in the spring, that there's already been some activity with spring sports, with coaching. So we would, as of right now, prorate those salaries for those individuals because there's, there's work leading up to the season or before the very first meet.
Good. Any other questions for Dr. or for Mr. Smith? Thank you. Ms. Smith, I just want to thank you for that. And, and to both you and Dr. Miller, I greatly appreciate how fiscally conservative you are and how much you have your, in your mind with all decisions that you're making, the current financial environment and what we're going to need to do to be creative to, to continue to, to thrive in this environment. So I, I appreciate your creativity in this. So is there any, Mr. Smith, do you have any other comments on your, on item six that you wanted to bring to our attention? Or does anybody have questions for Mr. Smith under those? Okay, hearing none, then can I have a motion to approve 6A through E, please?
Some move.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you. So our final, this is a placeholder for our staff and student learning. Dr. Miller covered most of this tonight. Is, Dr. Miller, do you have anything else you wanted to add on this topic?
Yeah, we're good. Thanks.
Thank you. And so on number eight, any items for more discussion?
No.
Hearing none? Well, none, we will move to adjournment. It is 8, no, 7:40. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Some move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, 6. Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? All right.